All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. I'd like to call this meeting of the Brooklyn City Council to order. Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Ryan Van Kirk.
Here.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Here.
Andy Selhert.
Here.
Mary Bill Bear.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Bart Kulitsky.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Following the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing. We'll be led in prayer this evening by Pastor Eric Markovich of the Dr. Martin Luther Evangelical Lutheran Church.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me just say it's an honor to be here. Let's pray. Well, God, bless our community with peace and prosperity, bless our leaders with wisdom and compassion. Grant that we might grow every day closer and in your love and grace. All this we pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. We do have two sets of minutes to approve this evening, the first of which is dated on March 12, 2018. Any comments or questions?
I move we approve as amended per the amendments that were sent out today.
Second.
To approve as amended, Rod Van Kirk.
Here.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Yes. And here also, yes.
Andy Selhert.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Bart Kulitsky.
Yes.
All right, the second are minutes from the following meeting, March 26, 2018.
I move to approve as amended per the revisions that were sent this afternoon.
Second.
To approve as amended, Rod Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhert.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Bart Kulitsky.
Yes.
Thank you. This evening, we do have some special guests with us from Parma Hospital, University Hospital. The first person that's going to speak is Mary Beth Tellarico. She is the Community Outreach Manager for the hospital, and then she is going to introduce, well, I'll let her introduce who's coming up.
Okay. Fair enough. Mayor Gallagher, Council President, Van Kirk, members of council and elected officials. My name is Mary Beth Tellarico, and I'm the Community Outreach Manager at University Hospital's Parma Medical Center. Also with me this evening is the President of Parma Medical Center, Peter Bergman, and Board Member, John Bundy, who represents the city of Brooklyn. Thank you for allowing us this evening the opportunity to address you tonight at your council meeting. We always look forward to these council meetings, and it gives us a chance to share with our local leaders the work that we are doing out in our communities. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our President, Peter Bergman, who will give you a brief overview of the state of our hospital and answer any questions that you may have. And then John Bundy, the Board Member, our Board Member, will end our presentation with some closing remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Mayor, council members, I appreciate you allowing me just a few minutes of your time to give you a quick update on Parma Medical Center. But before I start with my kind of official comments, I want to tell you there's really three things that...I originally am from Buffalo, New York, and I came here about a year ago. And I ran a couple hospitals in Buffalo that were Catholic hospitals. So it was great for me tonight to hear the opening prayer, because that's how we started all of our meetings up at other hospitals in Buffalo with an opening prayer. The second thing is a little bit more lighthearted. Up until about a week ago, I kind of felt like I was still in Buffalo. I'd wake up every morning, there'd be snow on the ground, and Tyrod Taylors were starting quarterback. So just like, oh. So I came here about a year ago, and I've had a year to really take in what Parma Medical Center is all about and what it means to the community. And the one thing that I want to really impress upon you tonight is that Parma Hospital is a community hospital, and we are in existence, and we've been in existence for 57 years to benefit the community. It's interesting for me, you know, living, I live out in Chagrin, work in Parma, but I don't like going downtown. And while it's a great downtown, healthcare is local, and especially when you're sick, it's tough to get downtown. I take it back. I don't mean I don't like going downtown, it's tough to get downtown. And especially when you're sick, you want access to healthcare in your community, and that's what we aim to do in Parma. And we want to be able to provide all the services necessary for, you know, 95% of our patients to be able to access the care they need. If there is something very subspecialty, sure, you know, you can access healthcare downtown. But if you take a look at our institutes, we have the Sidemen Cancer Institute to get cancer care locally. We have HHBI, the Harrington Heart and Vascular Institute, all your cardiac needs, all your vascular needs. We have a very quickly growing vascular program and cardiac program. We do close to the same amount of cardiac caths that downtown does, and we do it here locally. It really is remarkable for the size of hospital that we have. We have a very vibrant, open-heart program, so that if you do need that care, you can get it locally. We partner with our EMS friends. I apologize for my accent, all you guys. We provide telestrokes. We live feed strokes from the ambulance, where they can call in and talk to a doctor in our ED. We provide medical direction for the squads here in Brooklyn. So we work very closely with them, making sure that we provide care for our local residents. I'm also very proud to say, back in December, we were named a five-star hospital by CMS, by Medicare and Medicaid. Out of 4,000-some hospitals in the country, only 8%, a little over 300, get recognized as a five-star hospital, which is their highest rating. It's pretty neat to have a local hospital, to have Parma named a five-star hospital, and that's based on quality. It's based on patient satisfaction. It's based on patient safety. So, you know, that is really, I think, the culmination of all the hard work that's been done in Parma, leading to that recognition. It's also notable that we did join university hospitals about four years ago. And again, university's mission is to provide the care in the communities, and so they've provided Parma with access to physicians, making sure that we have a very vibrant primary care network, making sure that we have all the specialists that we need out in the community, from oncology to cardiology to the very specialized surgical care. They've also provided the hospital with a great deal of capital. And if you take a walk through Parma Medical Center right now, you'll notice it from the top down, from all nine floors of the building, we've renovated and brought it up. I don't think those floors have been touched in the last 57 years, and they look brand-new now. And that's what we need to do. Our next big project is our operating rooms. We did our patient care areas, we're going to renovate our operating rooms. About a $25 million to $30 million project, giving us 10 brand-new, very large ORs for our surgeons. So we are investing in the community. We just put in a new cath lab. We are about to put in a new MRI, and, you know, these are millions and millions of dollars worth of projects that we're proud that we can provide here in Parma and for the communities. Let me see. From an outreach perspective, and going along the themes of providing community care, we've provided screenings in Brooklyn. Over 400 people have been screened for stroke, hearing, cancer, blood pressure, and other conditions here in the city of Brooklyn. We partner with you for the city on Employee Health and Wellness Fairs. We are sponsored for the Brooklyn Home Days, and we partner with the Brooklyn Fire Department for their Safety Fair and Open House. In total, all of UH in 2016 provided a little over $300 million worth of community benefit for the Cleveland area, and Parma specifically in 2016 provided about $12 million worth of community benefit. So again, it's investing in the communities, being part of the community, and providing care there. I would be neglectful if I didn't mention our wonderful board. We have a great board that, you know, is made up of the founding members of the hospital and all of the communities, and we're honored to have John Bundy here, who is one of our Board Members, and Andrea Whitten, who is another Board Member. For me, having a strong board, having a board that's tied into the community, that not only is our, you know, ambassador to the community, but also trusted counsel for me, and especially being new to the hospital, new to the community, they've been great to work with. So having said that, I will invite John up to make a few comments, but again, John, I appreciate all the support you've given me in the hospital over the years.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, I've been on the Board of Directors at Parma Hospital for almost 14 years now. Parma has been the medical director for our paramedics since Ekonis closed, and they've been an outstanding hospital, especially in, they excel extraordinarily in cardiology and with joints. I'm very proud to say that. About two years ago, I had the opportunity to ask Mr. Tom Senti, the President of UH Hospitals, about what kind of person we were going to get for our new president at Parma Hospital, and he said, you know, we're going to need somebody very special for that role, and Peter has lived up to that billing and gone beyond. He's, he got his master's degree from Cornell University, and his, the reason he's serving the Parma Hospital is so he can be closer to his parents. We're very lucky to have him, and if you ever have any questions or problems with Parma Hospital, I'll be glad to help you in any way. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bundy. Mary Beth, Peter, John, thank you so much for coming tonight. We very much appreciate it. We are very grateful to have UH Parma in our community. I know that our residents would like it very much as well, so thank you so much for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Harry.
Okay, at this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. I'd like to talk about a couple things. The first thing is, I think most people know, I volunteer with the Pediatric Bane Tumor Foundation, which held a couple events. One of them is the Ride for Kids, and one event we have coming up now is at Tony K's Saturday, May 19, from 7:30 to 10:30. There'll be food, auctions, 50/50, lottery board, booze basket, drawings. Tickets right now are $20 in advance, $25 at the door. The advance tickets are due, I believe, May 6. Tickets include pizza, wings, rigatoni, salad buffet, beer and pop. And there'll be many things there, and it's a very nice place and good food. Along with that, for the auctions, if anyone would be interested, we're still looking for baskets, anything, someone would like to donate, gift certificate, the same, anything like that to be raffled at Tony K's. And we're also running another fundraiser with this for a donation for the Ride for Kids. It's a shoe collection. It's lightly worn shoes, shoes in good condition. They, if you'd like, put them in a bag, and you can drop them off at my house, which is 7439 Outlook Avenue. They have to be lightly worn, in good condition, you know, they can be worn, but again, in good condition, they're going to be, they get shipped over to third-world countries and donated. You need adults, childrens, everything. A little bit on the ride. Motorcycle ride. It's on June 10 at the Independence Fieldhouse Soccer Fields. Registration is 8:00 to 9:30. Ride starts at 10 o'clock, rain or shine. It's at 6354 Sealeague Drive. Donation for motorcycle, $35 or up, and per bike, not person. There'll be fresh-cooked food there, hamburgers, hot dogs. We're trying to get ice cream there, so there's a good chance you're going to see ice cream along with this. And it's a good time out in the morning when you get there, there's coffee, donuts, orange juice, a light breakfast. And another thing I'd like to talk to, nothing to do with this, but, you know, since I was raised as a little kid, you went into a restaurant, you were taught you either had to buy something, sometimes they would let you use the restroom, if you weren't buying something, you left. And a lot of restaurants still have that sign up, you have to buy something or not. I've had friends tell me that Starbucks also has those signs. I could not swear to it, they said they're there. So these two guys made it the next day on, what, Good Morning America. The President of Starbucks, or CEO, whatever, he's on there apologizing, and my friends said they heard on another news thing, whatever, a person walked into Starbucks and asked for his free coffee, and they gave it to him. And that store manager no longer has a job, because she was doing what she was told to do. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Anyone else? Okay, very good. We'll move on with our reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We begin this evening with our Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Miss Hears' Summer Camp will be held at the Brooklyn Elementary School, June 11 through July 20. July 20, 2018, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. till 2:45 p.m. Brooklyn Summer Camp Program offers the following age groups: five- and six-year-olds, seven-and-eight-year-olds, nine-and-ten-year-olds, 11-and-12-year-olds. Students must be five years of age to participate. Birth certificate is required upon registration for all five-and-six-year-olds. Brooklyn resident fee is $275. St. Thomas More and Heritage Christian Parma Heights corporate fee is $345. These fees do not include field trips or daily lunches. These fees do not include a Camp Brooklyn t-shirt. A parent meeting will be held on June 8 for all age groups. Parents are asked to be present at 7:00 p.m. for an informational presentation by the directors and staff. Summer Camp offers fun, safe, and exciting ways to keep your children busy, including whole camp, field trips, games, arts and crafts, sports, and swimming. Registration will begin May 1 through June 1. Please note that if you register after June 1, your child will not be able to receive a Camp Brooklyn t-shirt. Discounts will not be given for late registrations. More information, please contact Director Rebecca Bindis, or email decamp@brooklynohio.com. Learn to swim classes are being offered at the Rec Center. The cost of Brooklyn residents is $50, non-residents $65, Parma $57.50. Registration begins May 14. Registration in person or at www activityreg.com. For class dates and times, please contact the Rec Center 216-351-5334. Next Recreation Board meeting will be held on Monday, May 21, at the Rec Center meeting room, 7:00 p.m., and I conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is Board of Zoning Appeals Commissioner Kulzar.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. The Board of Zoning Appeals met this past Thursday on April 19 and heard a request from Seconia Sign for two side variance for the number of identification signs permitted on a building face for Mark Store located at 7359 North Cliff Avenue. This request was granted for two additional signs, ones for their deli, others for pharmacy. The other requests were for the Peterbilt going in at the old Carnegie Body at 9500 Brook Park Road. The first was from American Fence Company. This was for barbed wire fence, which is not permitted in commercial district. This was granted. It was an existing condition, and they were replacing it as it was. Their next request was for, from Lobello Associates, and this was for a four-foot variance to the maximum width for an access drive. Put a new drive in, widen it so they have enough room to get trucks in and out without swinging fire into the street. That was approved. And their last request was for a two-foot height variance for an eight-foot fence in front of the building, and that request was withdrawn. They'll be putting up a six-foot fence, which is permitted. The next scheduled meeting for the Zoning Board of Appeals is May 17. Meeting is here, always on Thursday at 6:00 p.m. in the Brooklyn City Hall Conference Room. Thank you. Completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kulzar. The next Plating Commission meeting will be held on Thursday, May 3, at 6:00 p.m. in the conference room, and we'll hear the following items. A request from Agile Signs for unlimited wall sign, a freestanding pole sign at 9500 Brook Park Road. A request from Direct Image Signs for three limited channel letter signs at 5092 Pettitman Road. Then two items from previous meetings, a request from Jessica Cliff for two wall signs, one mounted LED channel letter sign, and one business identification sign at 4315 Ridge Road. And a request from Menard Incorporated for final site approval for a Menard's retail business at 7700 Brook Park Road. Again, that's on Thursday, May 3, at 6:00 p.m. The public is welcome to attend. Next up is our School Board Liaison, Councilman Kulitsky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. The Brooklyn Board of Education met on April 17, 2018. Principal Patrick Yarman said the third-grade reading tests are done, and the next will be math. Safe Rock to School Event Bike Rodeo is coming up on Saturday, May 5, 2018, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Bring your bike and helmet to a bicycle skills course at 9200 Bitoff. Climb in and touch a fire truck or police car. Taste a smoothie, win a bike or other prizes. Register for kindergarten. For more information, call 216-485-8176. Dr. Gluckhoff shared ways they are reducing operating costs. Reduce administrative salaries by $50,000, energy costs by installing LED lights. Shared services, busing with Parma, was passed at this meeting. Because of reduced state funding, we have lost $1.8 million a year since 2010. As the reduction continues, we will have a deficit of $324,356 in 2018 and $2,261,000 in 2019. Funding to charter schools is most of the problem. Contact your state representatives and let them know that you're not happy with the situation. But in the meantime, you can see why we need this renewal issue to pass. The children and your property values are at stake. Please vote on May 8. New high school courses in Brooklyn are Introduction to Computer Science and Leadership Academy. Polaris Career National Technology Honor Society honored three Brooklyn seniors, Kayla Cobb, Jeffrey Rosen, and Sabrina Perry. Congratulations to all of our seniors. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Kulitsky. The Finance Committee meeting did meet this evening at 6:30 in the conference room, as we do on all regularly scheduled council meetings. I will go over what was new to the agenda this evening and also what we'll be voting on tonight. The first thing was a request for a bid approval for our 2018 Streets Program. When we passed the capital budget, we had budgeted for a little over $1.5 million in street repairs this year, and that was to do Torrance, Orchard, and Delora. We received five bids from different contractors around the area, and the winning bid was for Breezy Trucking and Paving for $1,150,000, which is obviously significantly lower than we had budgeted for. And so we are looking at, right now, we have getting quotes from Mr. Courtney's, some costs to do Southwood by the school, as well as South Parkside. And so we'll keep residents informed of that, but we are for sure going to be doing Torrance, Orchard, and Delora this year, and that construction should start sometime, hopefully either late spring or early summer. Up for third reading adoption this evening is ordinance 2018-37. This is to ratify the city of Brooklyn's updated statement of investment policy, and again, this just updates our policy. It has not been updated since 1999, and if the ordinance passes, it will just make some updates to keep us in alignment with Ohio Revised Code. Ordinance 2018-39 is up for a third reading adoption. This is amending Exhibit A of ordinance 2016-88, providing for the compensation for part-time, full-time administrative employees, non-resident agreement in the city of Brooklyn. And there were several changes that were made on this ordinance. I did read those into the record at the first meeting when it was up for first reading, and those are out there on the website. If anyone would like to take a look at that, there were several changes made to that one. Next up is ordinance 2018-41, and this is, the administration has asked that we pass this by suspension of the rules this evening, and this is to amend the ordinance for the recreation center fees for advertising. It adds two new categories to that, the first of which is for the center ICE advertising. The range for that is $4,000 to $10,000, and the second one is for dasher boards in the arena, and it's between $600 and $1,500, and the administration wants to pass by emergency that so they can start promoting that advertising opportunity in the Rec Center. Next up is, for first reading this evening, is ordinance 2018-43, and this is providing for the programs operated and conducted by the Recreation Department, the city of Brooklyn. All of our, up to this point, all of our programs and the different things that we offer at the Rec Center are all different ordinances, and so every time we make a change, we have to amend all these different ordinances. So this ordinance consolidates all of those into one ordinance. Then ordinance 2018-42, we're not going to be taking a vote on this this evening except to amend it, and this updates our capital improvement plan for 2018. Of course, when we pass this budget back in 2017 for 2018, there will be changes that have to be made, and Mr. Schaefer went over those changes in the Finance Committee meeting, and the total increase over what was expected to spend in capital improvements from last year, this year, right now, stands at $87,030. And there were changes made for the engineering for the slope bridge, the slope project on Ridge Road went up a little bit. We're swapping out a V-Box sprayer for the recreation center, instead we're going to buy a floor scrubber. And then there's a couple pieces of software that need to be purchased by the Police Department, as well as some battery backups for the department as well. And so all those changes put together are an increase of a little over $87,000. Next up is ordinance 2018-44. This is on first reading, but again, the administration is asking that we pass by suspension. This has authorized the mayor to enter an agreement with civil and environmental consultants. They're going to provide the consulting services in Santeri landfill for the solar panel project that will be taking place here shortly. The total estimated cost is $31,636, and we will be reimbursed by the contractor once this project is completed. And then lastly is ordinance 2018-45. This is amending ordinance 2016-83, establishing rules and regulations in rental fees for use of the city of Brooklyn Fire Station, Community Room, and Community Center. And I'm just going to go over a couple of these changes. There are quite a few of them, but all of this is posted on the city website. For the Fire Station, Community Room will now require a deposit of $100, and the resident hourly rate for Monday through Friday will be $30, for Saturday and Sunday will be $40. The non-resident hourly rate will be $60, Monday through Friday, $90 for Saturday and Sunday. At the Community Center, a deposit of $200 will be required. The hours will be from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and from 12:00 noon to 10:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday. The hourly rate for half the room will be $50, for the entire room will be $100, Monday through Friday, $100 for half the room, and $150 for the entire room on Saturday and Sunday. That's the resident rate. The non-resident rate is $100 for half the room, $175 for the entire room Monday through Friday, $175 for half the room, and $225 for the entire room Saturday and Sunday. And then we made some different changes to the rules and regulations as well, which will be available whenever people go to rent those facilities. And that is all we had in the Finance Committee report. Again, we do meet at 6:30 prior to all regularly scheduled meetings. At this time, we'll have reports of council. We begin this evening with Mrs. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Good evening. First, real quick, the Domestic Violence Committee will be meeting next week, Thursday, May 3, at 6:30. I do not have a location yet, but a public notice will be going out about that. April is Child Abuse Awareness Month. Child abuse is a serious issue in the United States, affecting one in five children. Abuse significantly impacts children both physically and emotionally, so I just wanted to bring that to everyone's awareness as well. Early voting is currently taking place. We do have a school levy that's been mentioned several times before and probably will be again later tonight on the May 8 ballot. I am encouraging residents to vote for the schools, they're the foundation of communities, and it's very important that we support our schools and support our children. And finally, Google is coming to Cleveland for an all-day event titled Grow with Google. This event will be held downtown on Friday, May 11. 60- to 90-minute workshops, networking opportunities, and one-on-one coaching will be available. For full schedule of events and details, you can check out their website at g.co/growcleveland. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Selhert.
Thank you. Just two items as Meg...
Just two items, as Meg mentioned, please support the schools, be it by mail-in ballot or if you go actually to the polls themselves on the 8th. Definitely an important matter for the city, for the students, everybody. Other thing is Taste of Brooklyn's this Saturday from 7:00 to 10:00 at Copperstone. You can still get pre-sale tickets for $15 apiece. Tickets are $20 at the door. All the proceeds go to scholarships to the students, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. Well, spring is finally here. Hopefully, it's here to stay, and for many, this means spring cleaning, so please do not forget to also clean out any old medications you may have around the house and make sure they're disposed of properly. That means bringing them to the locked drop box that is located in the lobby of our Police Department. No liquids or needles, please. And with the nice weather, more students are walking and biking to school, so please use a little extra caution and be aware of our students. Mrs. Politzky mentioned the Safe Rocks to School Bike Rodeo and Touch a Truck. Just a couple additions, there is a raffle for a bike, there are prizes and giveaways, and the students actually make their own smoothie by pedaling. It's really something that the students really enjoy. And just note that in the past, this was at Ridge Park Square, so this is a new location this year at the elementary school. And I'm going to be a little redundant here to encourage everyone to please support Issue Four, which is the Brooklyn City Schools Renewal Levy. It is no increase. The renewal is very important to maintaining quality schools, which directly impacts our students and everyone in the community as it relates to our property values. This levy does collect $2.2 million and represents almost 14% of the budget, so it is very critical that this be renewed. The majority of members of council did vote to support this renewal levy and also encouraged residents to support it as well. If you're interested in voting by mail, the deadline to have the application down to the Board of Elections is 12:00 noon Saturday, May 5th, and ballots must be postmarked by Monday, May 7th, which is the day before the election. I'm reminding residents of these important deadlines because last fall, when the permanent improvement levy failed by two votes, there were ballots that were not postmarked by the day before the election. They were mailed the day before the election, but because of where and how they were mailed, they did not get postmarked in time. Also, please remember to complete the inner envelope with all the required information or it will not count unless it's corrected and returned before the deadline. As of Saturday, there were 713 residents who have requested vote-by-mail ballots, so please consider this very convenient method of voting. I'd like to thank Mr. Bergman, Mrs. Talarico, and Mr. Bundy for coming here and speaking to us about Parma Hospital. We were one of the founding communities, and Parma Hospital has always been a very important asset to the City of Brooklyn. Finally, congratulations to our Law Director, Mr. Butler, who was named Man of the Year by the St. Edward High School Legal Eagles, and these are members of the legal community who are graduates of St. Edward High School or who have sons who are members of the St. Edward community, and their mission is to promote professionalism, advance continuing legal education, assist St. Edward students and the school family, and provide a social setting to allow for the free and collegial exchange of ideas among members. So congratulations, it's a well-deserved honor. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thanks, you. Thank you. Next up is Mrs. Valbeer.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to welcome and thank Reverend Markovich. Mark Makovich, I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Good.
We met, I don't know if you remember, but we met on the campaign trail, and you had just moved into Brooklyn, and you were moving, and you were so kind enough to answer the door and chat with me, and it was very nice meeting you. I didn't recognize you for a moment there with your collar, but I do thank you, and it's nice to see you again, and I hope you enjoy Brooklyn. Secondly, I'd like to thank Mr. Bergman and the UH staff there. It's wonderful that we're able to par with UH. We go, I personally go back many, many years with UH. I was born there. My mother worked there. She was a nurse there. My children were all born there, and it's a wonderful, wonderful hospital. My daughter works there, my son-in-law works there, so we love UH Hospital. It's wonderful. I know everybody talks about the clinic, but UH does wonderful things there because they are a teaching hospital. So that's one thing that they really experiment with many, many things. They are a teaching hospital, so I thank them, and we're very lucky to have them so close to us. Also, it is so important to vote for the levy to get out. Sometimes you think, my vote doesn't count, oh, I don't have time to vote, but look what happened the last time. So please go out there. If you have a strong school, you have a strong city, so please go out there and vote for our levy. This is just an observation about our system of justice and politics. I believe we live in the greatest country in the world. Our democracy dates back to our founding fathers, and the most important and material aspect of our democracy is citizens exercising their rights to select who they choose to be in the leadership positions of our communities, our state, and our nation. Elections take place every year. In Ohio, basically primaries are in May and general elections are in November. The primary this year is May 8th, and if you are registered to vote, I'm sure all of you are getting deluged with literature from various candidates running in the primary. I must get literature every single day. It's just getting to the point where it becomes obnoxious, so I know, I can only imagine you must be getting it also. This literature includes people running for local precinct committee people, all the way up to governor and senators. Numerous signs are planted along our streets and our highways. Many people consider all of this very annoying, and they do ignore it. Many throw the literature away without really analyzing it or even reading it. But remember, folks, many countries in this world would give anything to have the freedom to decide how their country is governed. So please take the time to look into the various candidates. Don't just cast a vote for the name that sounds familiar. The effort to be knowledgeable really is not that hard. There is advice out there from neutral and informed organizations to help you make your decisions. Many people, for instance, say they have no idea when it comes to judges. I don't. There is an organization out there called Judge for Yourself. It is a nonprofit, all-volunteer organization that is comprised of the four major bar associations in Cuyahoga County, the Cleveland Metropolitan Bar, the Women's Bar, the Cuyahoga County Criminal Lawyers Association, and the Norman S. Minor Bar Association. They investigate thoroughly all the candidates who wish to be considered. Two days are set aside, and members hear speeches from the candidates and evaluate carefully their qualifications. They are then rated as to how competent they are. This information of the ratings is available online and has been published in various newspapers and publications. The important thing is to take each election each year seriously and properly evaluate the candidates. Our ability and our right to choose who will be our leaders is the greatest benefit we have in a free society. So please, go to judgeforyourself.com, and if you don't know who the judges are, look to see their qualifications and how they are rated. They are rated by attorneys that work with them and would know better than anyone. So if you get a chance, please do do that if you have any questions. And, excuse me, that pretty much completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. I also want to throw my full support on Issue Four. Our sports, music, and other activities are all on the line in our school system. This is a very important issue to our students. Please, support the schools. Mail your ballot in, get to the polls, and vote for this. It's very important because everything in that system, everything in that school system is running on this issue. It's a renewal, it's not going to cost you more. This is something our students need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is Mrs. Politzky.
Thank you, President Van Kirk. I was going to talk about this Taste of Brooklyn too, but I'll mention that at the Chamber of Commerce meeting this past month, us members that went got to preview the Taste of Brooklyn with about maybe four or five different people that are going to be at the Taste of Brooklyn. I believe there will be around 13 different organizations there, so the food ought to be good, and the Brooklyn Jazz Band will be there, and they are absolutely excellent. So make sure that you think about coming to the Taste of Brooklyn on Saturday, the 28th at 7:00. And also, as everyone else said, as being the school board liaison and listening to all the good things that are going on in this school, we have to support this issue because otherwise, I don't know what's going to happen. A little note about the Brooklyn Historical Society. Mr. Bill Crecci will present a program on haunted Franklin Castle and the Tiedemann family's connection to this at the meeting on Wednesday, two days from now, on the 25th at 7:00 p.m. Very interesting young man. He lives there half of the time, and he actually was a docent at Kelly's Island or Putten Bay during the summer months. Very knowledgeable young man. Next month, we will have a raffle on the spring quilt. It's hand-quilted by several of us members, and they are beautiful. Probably, if you bought them in Amish country, you'd pay $800 or $900. So for a dollar, you can get a chance. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Politzky. Just a couple of things. I first want to thank Mr. Ardito for coming up once again and talking about the fundraiser for the Children's Tumor Foundation. It hits a little bit closer to home this year. We have a very dear family in our church who has a two-month-old baby that has a very aggressive brain tumor and really, right now, is fighting for her life, and so thank you so much for your work in that program. It's a scary thing when kids go through stuff like that. It really hits close to home this year. Her name is Colette Piazza, and she could use everyone's prayer, so if you think of her, please pray for her this evening. Also wanted to mention that tomorrow evening in Room 173 at the high school at 6:30, the mini-group made up of school board members and of council members will meet once again to continue discussing the Hurricane Alley property, and Benkey will be there. They're the ones that we contracted with to kind of do some iterations of what the property could possibly look like, making it a sports facility and filling some other needs of both the school and the city. So that meeting will take place again. That's tomorrow night at 6:30 in Room 173 in the school. I also want to thank Pastor Makovich for coming. I very much appreciate that. It was good talking to you before the service and, or before the service, we're not in church, all right, before the council meeting, and glad you're here in Brooklyn, and I look forward to seeing you around much more. And I want to thank all the pastors that have come so far to the meeting. I've heard, again, as I mentioned last meeting, nothing but very positive comments from that, and I very much appreciate you being here. And then lastly, as has been mentioned seven times, several times, make sure that you do get out to vote on May 8th. It is very crucial to our republic that you do that. It is, as Mrs. Valbeer mentioned, there are nations around the world that just wish they could do what we do, and so whatever, however you choose to vote, make sure that you do get out and vote. Again, it is crucial for our republic. At this time, we'll move on to the mayor's report. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President Van Kirk. I'll touch on some things that haven't been covered yet. This Wednesday at noon and also at 7:00 p.m., the Heritage Home Program will be at the Senior Community Center. If you're looking to do some upgrades in your home, they offer, in conjunction with the city's support, technical assistance as well as low-interest loans to our residents. So if you haven't used them before, it's a great organization. Again, that's noon and 7:00 p.m. this Wednesday, the 25th, the Senior Community Center. Also, Cleveland Water Department will be having an open house, May 12th, it's a Saturday, that's at 1245 West 45th Street. They will give tours of the facility. They have a bunch of family-friendly things for kids to do, food trucks. It's just really a great opportunity to go see a water department, which most people probably don't ever get the opportunity. So they offer this once a year. They change the different water departments, and this one's at the 1245 West 45th facility. This past weekend, you should have received a city-school newsletter, printed newsletter. This is a first of hope many. One of the things that we've been hearing from residents sometimes, people that are on Facebook or social media, would really like to have some of these things in hand. So Mark Gluckhoff and I put together a newsletter with the help of all of our staff, and this is just the beginning. We hope to have one in the fall, so hopefully this is useful. If you did not receive this newsletter, it would be helpful for you to contact City Hall so we make sure that you're on future lists. We do have extra copies out here on the City Hall desk, though. I want to thank the PTA for inviting me to the Founder's Day this past Saturday. This is an event that they have every year that honors all the past presidents of the PTA, and I just want to thank them and all the parents. You know, these people, they not only volunteer so much of their time to help the school, I mean, they're working, taking care of their kids, and there's just so many parents out there that are just doing double duty on all of these different things, and you know, I envy it because unfortunately, I think I'm going to be the terrible parent that just says, where do I write the check to to help? And, you know, just don't have enough time to do things. So these people, I think they're just great people, and I just want to thank them for all that they do for the school and our community. This past weekend, we had the shred day, and the service department was open for drop-off. We had a great turnout. I'm very happy at the amount of people who took the opportunity to drop off stuff at the service department, like paints or extra trash, and we are going to offer that one more time this year on October 20th, the drop-off component, and hopefully we'll seek another grant for a shred day next year. And lastly, I want to pass on information from the Secretary of State. They released their state issue report for Issue One. These are the proponent and opponent's viewpoints of Issue One, which is the redrawing of congressional districts. So if you're looking for more information on that particular topic, go check out the Secretary of State's website. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move on with directors' reports. We begin this evening with our Recreation Manager, Mrs. McGee.
Good evening. The Brooklyn Recreation Center will be hosting its Spring Swivel ICE Presentation on May 5th at 7:00 p.m. All are welcome. And I just would like to make a correction to Mr. Tansky's Rec Board Report. Students registered before June 1st will receive a T-shirt. All students registered after June 1st will not receive a T-shirt for the camp. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll now move on with our Finance Director, Mr. Shait.
Thank you. The only additional item I have is that I provided City Council with the 2018 updated gross municipal income tax collections through the first four months of the year. So far, in 2018, the city has grossed $4.7 million in collections. We collected in 2017 just shy of $15.2 million, and we were projecting to collect $15.3 million in gross collections for 2018. So to be on target for that $15.3 million through the first four months, the city should have collected $5,355,000. That is a difference of $622,000 below the target. So actual versus projected, the city is down $622,000 through the first four months, and I will continue to provide updates on that as we move through 2018, as that is our largest source of revenue, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Next up is our Fire Chief, Chief Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Good evening, everybody. The Brooklyn Fire Department will be conducting its annual inspection and testing of the fire hydrants in the city beginning Monday, May 7th. Signs will be posted the day before in each area to be flushed. On the day of the flushing, City Hall and the Cleveland Water will be notified of the areas that are to be tested. Please remember that discolored water is a common occurrence during hydrant testing. Should you experience discoloration, try turning on the faucets in your home and let the water run for three to five minutes or until the water runs clear. If it does not, or if you have any other questions, we encourage you to contact the Fire Department or the Cleveland Water Department at 216-664-3060 to report the problem. That completes my report. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Chief. We'll now move on with our legislation for this evening. The first item is a request for bid approval for the 2018 Streets program, and the winning bid is from Fabrizi Trucking and Paving for $1,150,380.
Move to award the bid to Fabrizi Trucking and Paving for $1,150,380.
Second.
To approve the bid, Brad Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shackey.
Yes.
Andy Sellers.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Valbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Art Politzky.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-17 and 2018-34 are on your agenda this evening, but they are both in abeyance, and they will remain there this evening. Next up for third reading adoption is ordinance 2018-37. Next up for a third reading adoption is ordinance 2018-37, to ratify the City of Brooklyn's updated statement of investment policy.
Move to adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Ron VanKirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shackey?
Yes.
Andy Selgert?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Palitsky?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-39 is up for a third reading adoption, amending Exhibit N to ordinance 2016-88, providing for the compensation for the part-time, full-time, and administrative employees, non-bargy agreement of the City of Brooklyn, Ohio.
Move to adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Ron VanKirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shackey?
Yes.
Andy Selgert?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Palitsky?
Yes.
On second reading this evening is ordinance 2018-40, amending Section 1 of ordinance 2016-6, establishing fees for the sports, park sports sponsorship program at the John M. Coyne Recreation Center. On second reading, but hoping to pass by emergency this evening, a suspension of the rules is ordinance 2018-41, amending Section 1 of ordinance 2016-23, establishing fees for advertising at the John M. Coyne Recreation Center.
Can we dispel, suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Ron VanKirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shackey?
Yes.
Andy Selgert?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Palitsky?
Yes.
To adopt, Ron VanKirk? Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shackey?
Yes.
Andy Selgert?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Palitsky?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-42, an ordinance authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2018. We do need to amend this this evening, and I read those amendment changes when I gave my finance report.
Move to amend as was read into the record?
Second.
To amend, Ron VanKirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shackey?
Yes.
Andy Selgert?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Palitsky?
Yes.
On first reading is ordinance 2018-43, providing for the programs operated and conducted by the Recreation Department of the City of Brooklyn. On first reading this evening, but hoping to be passed by suspension of the rules, is ordinance 2018-44, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Civil and Environmental Consultants Incorporated, CEC, to provide consulting services at the sanitary landfill as it relates to the Cuyahoga Urban Renewable Project.
Introduce by all the suspended rules?
Second.
And can you just read into the record the amount and also that we're going to be reimbursed for it?
Sure. The amount again, my finance report is $31,636, and yes, we will be reimbursed at the conclusion of the project.
To suspend the rules, Ron VanKirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan-Shackey?
Yes.